Would you like to call Speed Door? Please rise for the provisions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Service Chief, please follow.
Mr. Roman, here.
Mr. Chick.
Here.
Here's the President. Mr. Kuzno, here.
Mr. Pinto, here.
Ms. Saffron, here.
Mr. Driver.
Here.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve the agenda. Support. Support my Mr. Iquino. Any questions? Same number. All favor or disfavor in saying aye.
Aye.
Oath. I'd say that. Call to the public. Seeing none, there should be no call. Clarifications from commissioners, correspondence. I don't have any. Thank you. No public hearings tonight. Reports from committees or trustees. Ms. Chick.
The Board met September 19th. The Board approved the renewal of the contract with the D.A. for the task force assignment, task force officer assignment. The Board also approved the hiring of a nonfirefighter trainee, Trayless Johnson. Also, the replacement of body and handcuffs for the police department capable from the narcotics spot. There was discussion about employees carrying concealed weapons in the building and policy to be placed in the employee handbook. There will be continued discussion. The master plan approval was on the agenda at most table. This is our version of the sentence deployed. It will be on the upcoming agenda. The Board reaffirmed the approval for zoning board that's met at Board Met's number 19-68 and include best and douches as on its first floor as a conditional use in the WLDV and the WLDNV. The Board also approved the conditional use for the doghouse LSE for expansion. That's all.
Thank you. CBA report, Mr. Kuzno.
Yes, thank you. CBA has not met since our last meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Burke, ready?
I am not ready.
Thank you. Planning Commission's report, Mr. Lippens.
Two quick updates. We did meet with second interested developer for the North Village site. By we, I mean the subcommittee of the Board, which includes members of the DDA and the Board as well as the manager herself. We had a productive meeting and are anticipating some revisions to that plan and a second meeting with them next week. Additionally, some updates on some cases that you've heard. We got word from the township engineer that the Speedway site, the private road that was approved as part of the lot split, that the Speedway has engineer capable and final inspection. And additionally, we have been in touch with the absolute storage applicant, planning commission table that application seeking a masonry material and some other site plan details to be included. We anticipate that coming back soon and believe that that applicant is not suitable material to present on return. So, things are moving along. We also do have a couple other cases in the pipeline, so I anticipate fairly busy fog with the sites that we have people seeking development, so.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Report, Mr. Iquino.
Nothing.
You can top up by any group. This is pocket.
Meeting on the 25th this month.
Thank you. All right, 10A, update zoning ordinance revision, project task schedule, Mr. Lippens.
Yes, so I know we are a little behind on the project schedule and I figured it was time to update our schedule and make a plan for that work. I think two things have, or really three things have taken up or being focused on in our work plan that has caused that delay. One is the extensive work the township has done on reviewing marijuana regulations. Since Planning Commission made their recommendation, there has been a number of reports to the Board, including, most recently, they did ask us to develop an application procedure, which is included in their packet for next week, as well as some additional analysis on potential buffer areas, I think with the intention of looking at Planning Commission's original recommendation for a five-foot buffer. But we'll see that in session, I would say, a series of maps were prepared for the Board's meeting next week. In addition to the research that we've done on the marijuana issue, we've been working diligently on the North Village process and the master plan process, of course, which Planning Commission sent on for county board approval in August. We do anticipate that the Board will have that on the next agenda as was covered by trustee Chick. So with that being said, I am happy to turn towards our zoning ordinance rewrite with the idea that we would start reviewing material in November of this year and still look forward to enter the review process and editing process in December. And that is the schedule update. And I did prepare a discussion on it as well, but I can hold that till after we discuss the schedule. I think one thing I am interested in discussing related to schedule is the review process. Previously, we discussed me submitting entire completed draft to Planning Commission, so each commissioner could have time to review that. I would say when that happens, we might decide to further revise the schedule if commissioners think they want a month or something to review that before discussions, we could allow that time. The other thing that isn't in the schedule is potentially doing a subcommittee review. So it's possible that Planning Commission might want to form a subcommittee to handle discussions on the zoning ordinance, so that we could, you know, review it in some detail and bring it to the larger commission. This is something I didn't really think about when I first prepared the schedule for Planning Commission, but I think it's worked fairly well in reviewing the North Village site. So it is a process that we could model for Planning Commission's review of the whole zoning ordinance as well. So there's a couple things to consider in discussion of the schedule, and I'm happy to take questions or concerns and update this or modify it for our next meeting.
Any questions? Comments? So, Mr. Lippens on the bottom of the first page of work with Planning Commission on addressing items from the technical review. That is the document we haven't received yet, correct?
No, you have received that.
We have. We have received that?
Oh, no. Yeah, that was, we did do a series of revisions, which we called urgent revisions, in 2018. So that is, that's going back to those revisions that we decided to be forward in that time.
Okay, so that was the important items that we took up, we took upon already from last year. And do you expect us to have the revised draft when again?
So we would be on page two, September 2019, which is currently working on determining how to incorporate master plan recommendations, which is one of the things I put on the discussion tonight. And then November would be when I sought to complete that into the technical review and.
Yeah, the technical, I'm sorry, the technical review is what I'm getting at. We're still awaiting that, correct?
No, that, so the technical review was.
Of the ordinance?
Yes, that was a document that we, we completed that in 2018. That's actually the first step on here. And I can include that in your next package just as a reminder.
I think we should.
Yeah, I would have to do that, and certainly I think I can distribute it again to commission if you don't have one on your record. But within that, we also determined what items we wanted to immediately proceed with, and we did proceed with those items.
Right, but I don't recall ever doing the whole, at all, looking at the whole ordinance, correct?
We have not given you a full edited ordinance yet, but that is different than the technical review. The technical review is a report. It's like a 20-page report that describes all the issues that Planning Commission wanted to address, and that has been done. And if you recall, when we first started the update, we had not been approved by the Board to work on the master plan, so this whole process was put on hold while we did the entire master plan update, so that the recommendations that we make for changes to zoning ordinance can incorporate the policies we have stored in the master plan update. That's why we're ramping up again now, because we've completed that, that part of the process. And I would say there are, you know, by way of update, which I think I've shared before, we have considered, we have an edited draft of the zoning ordinance, which includes everything that I would consider a technical amendment that I worked on with the zoning administrator. And then we've also done the changes that I would also consider non-substantive, but change that we made for ease of use, which are kind of the restructuring or ordering of chapters.
Right.
What we haven't done yet are the changes that are more based on policy that we discussed.
So I hear that's the December to April, the review of the revised, revised draft?
Correct.
Okay. So you're, but you, in your comments, you're expecting possibly to add something November?
Yes.
Or by December, which is not substantial?
No, I, I think what I would like to do is give Planning Commission a draft in November. What I don't know is how, what I proposed previously is that we have all Planning Commission review that draft, and then we do a submit comments or memorandum to me, so that I can combine that and then bring it back to Planning Commission to consider. I will tell you, we go page by page like we do with some of the zoning amendments we've made. It could take a year for us to get to the entire ordinance or longer. So what I would like to do is find a way for us to do that faster, but still be substantive in our review and response. So, two ways I would suggest. One would be Planning Commission to agree, okay, planner's gonna submit draft rest review in November, but let's take a month to review it and place it on this agenda. We can agree on, as a group, on how long you want, what agenda you want it to be placed on. In another way that I thought of more recently, which I mentioned, is possibly doing a subcommittee that could also help to determine when to place it on an agenda.
All right, for myself, I would choose the month or so of review by the entire commission, but I'd like to hear from the other commissioners.
And I think that would work if we get consensus.
And I, I would prefer that way over a subcommittee. Anyone else comment or agree or disagree?
I agree.
Disagree? Sounds like it's.
Soon does.
So, and if so, you know, we could set a point, like you said, a month ahead, or even six weeks, whatever, if we deem that we may need some more information, and we should forward comments, your findings to you before that time, and have another discussion once you compile all that.
That was our original plan, and I'm happy to proceed with that.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Sounds like we have a great, a great majority of this one. Okay? All right. Any other questions or comments about the tentative schedule? Seeing none, we can move on.
So, yeah, just by, you know, since we're gonna get back into this for your next or upcoming agenda, I will include some of the back material just as a refresher. So I'll, I'll put the technical report as well as some of the memorandums we've done, some of the amendments we've already looked at, so everyone can get it fresh in their mind again.
Very good. Ms. Chick.
I just have one other question regarding information coming from the zoning board's appeals and current legal issues. Are we getting lately any information from that entity, or is there anything that we need to pay attention to that is of urgent nature?
Is that to me?
Your what?
Um, I don't, you know, I wouldn't be able to answer only by talking to the zoning administrator, so I'd have to.
Okay.
I would say from a CBA perspective, probably is more through the zoning administrator's activities and experience what's happening there. Kind of the same, similar things, a lot of setbacks, a lot around the late for the small lots and people wanting to put additions on, put a garage, something like that, and nothing new is the same.
Okay, thank you.
According to the last quarter, quarter we reported, I didn't see an indication of any outstanding issue that she mentioned, that I recall, but. Anyone else?
As part of that background material too, we did do analysis of variances, and I'll include that memorandum again for your, as a refresher. Certainly, any variances that are coming up now are part of the technical review process, which I've mentioned, I have already worked with the zoning administrator on some of those technical issues that are not urgent and can be completed at the time of the rest of the zoning process.
Very good. Moving on, what are the new business revisions to the Woodmore Lake North Territorial Road overlay district, Mr. Lippens?
Yes, so one of the revisions to master plan that we discussed that is included in the draft master plan that's been referred to the Board for adoption is some revisions to the Woodmore Lake corridor. A portion of that corridor that is more industrial in nature was recommended to be used, or to be, for future land use as an industrial use, but with the idea that we would also review the industrial districts for appropriate design buffer and land use considerations. That is kind of a separate issue from this. I think the question becomes what to do with the Woodmore Lake North Territorial of Overlay District, and whether or not it is functioning. So what I wanted to do was take a look at this and think about what standards could be incorporated into the underlying districts. And the question that I ask here from a planning perspective is based on the master plan and even the 2014 master plan, which included a lot of recommendations for the improvement of designing commercial sites and industrial sites. Is it appropriate to consider some of these, this overlay zone in the underlying districts? The other thing that I would say is the North Territorial portion, the portion towards the north side of Woodmore Lake Road and around the North Territorial exit, a lot of that is general commercial, and the underlying zone is general commercial. And there is not a lot of general commercial in the township. So the question becomes, is a design standard for this area general commercial, something we also might want to look at in any other general commercial district as well. And I think we can make the case that, that yes, these design standards for the most part are positive design standards. They were incorporated to the overlay because they're positive design standards, and it's consistent with the master plan to look at incorporating these types of design standards into the commercial industrial districts. If we go that direction, the overlay district becomes possibly unnecessary or obsolete. And that's the, that's the discussion. So I also think that for clarity of regulation, it's sometimes confusing for people to interpret an overlay district and understand what they can and should do for their site. So what we want to do is just make it clear, if you have a use that fits within the area, these are the design standards, this is the procedure for making amendments to your site plan and to make improvements on your property. And of course, I think this aligns with Planning Commission's goals with the entire process of revising the zoning ordinance and the, and the master plan. So I thought this would be a good discussion for this evening. And one will serve as a refresher for Planning Commission on the North Territorial Woodmore Lake Overlay District. And then two, just to get us started, I did a little highlighting, saying, these seem like commercial standards, these seem like standards that could be proposed. Certainly, I could incorporate these types of design standards into both the industrial district and the commercial district. So this is, you know, draft for discussion. I want to get your feedback before I start making edits. So that's my briefing, and I hope you take questions and open it up for your thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Iquino.
It would be helpful to have a map included in this. So we're visually looking at the overlay area, the RTM district, you know, just, just of that segment there. I know it's, that is one of it, but it's just harder to see.
No, I know. I was just wondering if I could bring that over so you could look at it. Would that be helpful?
At least it was right here, so I was to be able to see. When we are discussing this again, if you could definitely.
Yeah, I can put that in the.
Can you see that?
I'm sorry.
It's okay, actually, I pulled it up here.
Yeah, it's on the website. Just the red. Yeah, so the red is, is GC, and the purple is LI, and then the green and the dark green are, are all AR. And this is an analysis map, so that's one district, but it's been sorted by size of parcel. And then the overlay district goes around the GC and around the RTM, which is the research district, around parts of the LI, and then around parts of, I believe, parts of the AR too. And it's not on this, but it basically is the interchange, the North Territorial interchange area, which we talked about being one of the things we wanted to study as part of the master plan process, and extends then down North Territorial.
So what I was.
Yeah, and I believe the history of this, and some of you that have been around it longer than me and working on multiple master plans would probably confirm this, is that that was done in conjunction with the sewer expansion, that that overlay district was tied to the idea that sewer would be extended down there to decrease the intensity of that area, but that they wanted specific design standards for it. And at that time, I think it would have been probably consistent with the master plan to incorporate those design standards into the overall districts as well. Now we've got a little bit of benefit of having some, some period of time where we've tried to implement it, and I think what we want to do is just clarify regulations and make it easier to implement. So I'm gonna leave this here.
On the overlay district standards tougher than general standards?
Yes, do you mind if I sit down? I guess.
No, you can sit down. Mr. Driver, you want, do you want to answer that question again?
Yeah, on the overlay district standards more stringent than the standard generally? What's the difference against what's the, what was the purpose of the overlay district? What was the need, what prompted the thought that this needed to be imposed over and above what was already in existence?
My, my interpretation is that they are additional, mostly design standards to incorporate sidewalks, frontage landscaping, pedestrian accessibility. There's a requirement for like a community design feature that are additional requirements from a design perspective, but not inconsistent with commercial district, which is why I suggested, you know, at my first read, some of those standards are things I think we do want to require of the GC district. The other thing that it does is it adds a series of additional land uses that can be done anywhere in the zoning, regardless of the underlying district. These uses can be pursued, which is basically like a bonus to those districts. It's unclear as to whether or not that has ever been executed, and the question I think that is more important is are those uses consistent with the underlying districts? And should we emphasize it with the master plan? So.
Mr. Iquino.
I was on the planning commission when the district was implemented, and when you look at the land uses, it was designed to really open it up more, to bring in more development in that entire area. And so instead of, it opened up a lot more permitted, uses that were automatically permitted, and then the, it would in place a lot of conditional that were not even on the books previously for the, for that overlaying district. So that was the whole intention, was to go ahead and say to people, look, we've got kind of open floor plan, here's a lot more opportunity for development in this area, and here's a lot more uses now that we see that could go in this area, so please come to us with your thoughts. I mean, that was the whole general thought.
That's the whole.
Right, and to add to what Mr. Iquino's comments were, Ms. Chick, Mr. Iquino, and myself, I think, were on the commission at the time, Mr. Kuzno too, yeah, and that, that was mainly the, the point, was to, it was to give more opportunity for development or certain uses in the, in that area. We did work a long time on it. The, the standards in here took quite a while to go through and, and come up with what you see now in the document, and I, and I think it's, it would be great if this overlay, if it was to be determined to not be used, that those, as Mr. Lippens did here, incorporate those. Those are standards that we didn't have in other areas, but I think they're very good standards if you review them. But if I'm mistaken, Mr. Iquino or Ms. Chick can correct me, but.
I think you're right.
But I, and also, and I'll get to you in a second, Ms. Chick, but I am also not a great fan of overlay districts. great fan of overlay districts. It does tend to get confusing. It seems at times you, it's, so in other words, to get some different types of uses in the area to have an overlay district, it does muddy up the waters on the difference between the two. So I think it's more difficult to administer and have some consistency. But I think over the years, since we developed this, nothing's really come of the efforts that the overlay district was trying to accomplish. But I would, I am not against removing the overlay and incorporating the standards though, that's my point. Ms. Chick.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that both Mr. Iquino and Roman are correct in the reason for doing the overlay district at the time. Honestly, as I recall, the issue about sewer expansion didn't really come into part of the discussion. The reason, actually, it just didn't come until later, when after the overlay district was done and the people that lived in the area actually came to the township and said, hey, you know, nobody's interested in these properties because we don't have sewers, so they asked to have an SAD. So that's probably why nothing has happened there, is that there, we didn't have sewers there at the time, we still don't. But, yeah, I have no problem eliminating the overlay district as well and incorporating these standards. It basically does the same thing, so that's all I have.
Ms. Infante.
I just have a general question. I understand what's gained by removing the overlay and the desire to streamline things, make it less confusing. What's lost if we... Yeah, what would be lost?
Mr. Lippens.
Well, I think the question, and my recommendation, if we proceed, would be to incorporate the design recommendations into the underlying districts, because as the commission has stated, it's time was spent on them and they're good design standards. The question that I ask is why would we want to do this here and not in the other, you know, few sites that are also in this district and other areas of the township? Because I think we would, and they're good design standards that are consistent with the type of development permitted in those districts. With the relation to uses, I think we just want to make sure that the uses are also incorporated into the appropriate underlying districts. And I should say that other, you know, other amendments, zoning amendments, district amendments have been made since the time this overlay was developed as well. And while I'm talking, I'd also thank you for the clarification on the service district, sewer service district. That was, you know, you hear things when you talk to people and they're not necessarily the way things happen, which is why I also wanted to defer to the commissioners that were a part of that process, so thank you.
Yes, I agree with Ms. Chick that the sewer issue wasn't the immediate concern or the reason for it. Anyone else? No? So, sounds like, I mean, we could go by each commissioner, yes or no, or how does a commission want to proceed? Do you feel to eliminate the Whitmore Lake overlay district and incorporate the standards would be appropriate? Is anyone against that? Ms. Chick.
Having, looking, and thanks so much for making everything colorized because it made it a lot easier to determine what was what, but the red that I've been looking at, I have no problem with eliminating more of the district.
Thank you.
I have, as well, have no problem eliminating a district. With our next discussion, when we really review it intensively, we could definitely have the map, though, of the areas, of the district area that we're talking about, and then what is the general, the general commercial and the industrial and commercial districts area. So for that, you know, like a blow up all of the zoning net. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so at this point, I think you have what the commission thinks, Mr. Lippens, and the standards, so in other words, if you're going to, it won't be this document, then really, if you're eliminating this, you're taking these standards and putting them elsewhere. So what is your, what is going to be your next step in this process for this?
Well, I think if, I think it might warrant just another discussion with a map, so maybe I'll keep this as an agenda item so that we can look at the map at your next meeting. But what I, the process that I'd like to take is to kind of, before I start doing any new writing on this, I wanted to get feedback on what I should attempt, and then ideally what it would be is just a part of the whole ordinance when you see it. I don't anticipate there's going to be a lot of stuff like this, that I want specific feedback before I do it, because I already have a number of things that I've been asked to address as part of the technical review. But it seems like this works, so if there are things that I'd like feedback on, or I'll bring them to you like this, as they're written.
Okay, and can you go over once again, and I think we have the direction that we're going to, but can you explain why overlay districts are typically, how they typically evolve and why, as far as the planning perspective in general?
I think that it's an authorized tool, so it's something that can be used, and I think the best way to use it is to apply design standards across multiple districts to unify a corridor. So in some respects, I think this is a good idea, and I understand why it was done, and I think we do want to look at those design standards to see how they would apply in the future. Is that a good enough answer?
Yeah, I don't think we're at a loss of any options in this particular, I mean, myself, other commissioners might have a different opinion. It sat idle for a while. We also did look at the southern part of it with another zoning matter like you spoke of. So we've already addressed that type of issue in the southern portion of it along Whitmore Lake Road. So I really, I don't see that it's a loss of an option for the township, personally, I don't. Anyone else? Mr. Kuzno.
Yeah, my impression was that it was kind of like a master planning of this general area, looking for some sort of uniformity, like you said, sidewalks, maybe your entryways and stuff like that, some sort of consistency there. One thing you said was, well, it never happened. Well, is this, are we supposed to put out the news flash, you know, all developers, we just changed this plan here, so come take a look at it, and will that happen if we do that again? If we change it back to whatever you're proposing? How's a word going to get out there? How do people find out about this thing? You know, it's, again, it's supply and demand probably is what it comes down to in reality, right?
Yes, and I think that the, these types of standards, if the past 10 years had been a real boom, we might have seen a lot of these design standards implemented along the corridor. And I think the way, what I'm proposing is that we look at those design standards in the underlying districts so that we do incorporate the quality design into all site development, not just on this corridor, but in other parts of the township as well.
So one thing I do recall, I thought that mixed use was one of the goals of this area as well, in terms of maybe having commercial below and residential above, or having commercial in front and residential behind or something like that. I think that was kind of one of the things that was anticipated as well. Am I way off there?
Yeah, a little bit. I think that was more for the downtown districts where it was looking at form base and having residential above and storefrontage and above.
I remember seeing some mockups that Doug had, this was Doug, right, that did this work on, wasn't it?
At the same time, we, or previous to that, we were also doing the downtown, the downtown districts also, and which I think that relates more to that. But this area was, you know, as you could see, some of the diagrams on the standards was to get, was a mix, a mix of commercial uses, I suppose.
And office, yeah, office and retail, I guess?
Right.
Yeah, okay. So, and just a quick question, is, there is some sewer in this area, isn't there? Doesn't the sewer come down this far?
I believe it does.
Right, so I'm looking for a map online here, I can't find one. Where would we find that?
I have a map at home I can bring in next time.
Great, but I'd like to see it right here.
Definitely south of North Territorial.
Yeah.
Paul, Mr. Iquino.
I was going to ask you, Paul, when you give us that map too, if you could put on there where the sewers are, so that, again, because that's all relative to our discussion too.
Yeah, but we have a map of that. It's in the master plan, we actually made a revision of it.
Right, but I'm saying if you can, you know, again, have that in the packet.
Yes, I understand.
For sewers, thank you.
Yep, good, thank you.
Ms. Chick.
I recall what Brad was talking about when we were talking about like commercial mixed use down at the node. That was part of the conversation, so you do recall that correctly. I don't think it, but it had more to do, not with so much of residential above, but just commercial and retail, but that's not happening, so.
Anyone else? Moving on, item 12. You need anything else, Mr. Lippens, at this time on item 11A? No? Okay.
No, I think not, yeah.
I'm sorry?
I think not, no, we're good.
Thank you. I make the motion we approve the minutes and dispense with reading of the August 21st meeting.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Iquino. Any questions, comments, or clarifications on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Final call to the public. There's none behind the board. Comments from commissioners? We'll start with Mr. Kuzno.
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Iquino.
No, sir. Have a great day.
Thank you. Ms. Chick.
I have nothing.
I have nothing. Mr. Zarzaki.
I have nothing.
Mr. Dwyer.
No, thank you.
Ms. Infante.
None, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to announce the next regular meeting, October 2nd, 2019, and make a motion to adjourn. Supported by Ms. Chick. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.